The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing for a liquor license transfer from Ashley due 395 South Main Street in Wilkes-Barre. You just want to come forward and...
Good evening.
Just please state your names for the record.
My name is Joe Tirana. Our appellant's here. The name of their restaurant is Avocado's Restaurant and Pizzeria, LLC. As you said correctly, madam, it's at 395 South Main Street in Wilkes-Barre, which is down in the plaza that starts out with the Crown Chicken and heads all the way over to the Queen of... the China Queen. There are several restaurants in that location at the plaza. The... there's a... only one so far besides this one has a liquor license down there. And the restaurant itself seats about sixty... about thirty people, correct? There's about six tables. And we are asking that a liquor license that presently is set in Ashley, Pennsylvania, the El Chelo Restaurant, that you as a council accept the placement of that liquor license in your municipality in the city of Wilkes-Barre. We're ready to answer any questions that you have or on the process or on specifics related to the restaurant.
How long have you... how long has Avocado's been in business so far?
A year and a half.
A year and a half, okay. Same place, same everything?
Yes.
Just without a liquor license?
I think yes, sir. Do I remember right, was it an Arthur Treacher's when I was a kid, maybe? Something like that, yeah.
And it was Pizza Fellas?
Mr. Pizza, Pizza Fellas, yeah.
That's when the... you were younger than me, so you got the first.
What are the hours of the restaurant?
The restaurant currently, what are your hours now?
Why don't you...
One of the...
Background noise, but we have a little interference.
Is that me? I'm sorry. The hours of the restaurant now?
Would you give your name, please, for the record?
I'm sorry.
Where we speak.
Oscar Santos.
Okay.
Name?
Santos, please.
Yes, so the hour is 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, you know.
8:00 AM till 10:00 PM, okay. Seven days a week?
Yes.
And also, will you be having takeout there or just in-house?
Takeout.
Takeout also, okay.
It's just a bar with...
I'm sorry.
The... what... yes.
Liquor or the food?
The liquor.
Takeout.
The six packs wherever you're going to be selling.
If it's possible, the drink to go.
It is possible.
Takeout.
Does this... does this location that you're moving to, does it have a bar, an inside bar where patrons could sit at?
It has, for a while, had a counter that will, I guess, be a place where they could sit, but there's really like...
Is this a restaurant with a liquor license or a bar with a restaurant?
Yes, it's been a restaurant for a year and a half.
Okay.
They just had the opportunity now to buy this liquor license, so they're asking that the city allow them to do that.
So it'll be onsite consumption?
Yes, sir.
So you said six tables?
Yes, ma'am.
So most of your services takeout? Yes or no? If you only have six tables?
And I have... we have more than six tables.
Oh, you have more than six tables?
Yeah. Now...
Can you calculate in your mind how many you have?
It's four chairs each, and we have, um, one, two...
It's like eight sixteen.
Sixteen tables?
Yeah, we put it together, you know?
Yeah.
So I was counting it by one, but if we put a separate six, like together?
So they have them sort of combined now to be a city...
Yeah, combined.
Eight and four, alright.
Like twelve. Like twelve tables, I'm sorry.
Twenty each.
That makes more sense because it is a bigger place than six tables.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Makes more... makes sense that there's more than six.
So I guess the question is how many people can the restaurant seat? Probably fifty... I'm not trying to answer it for you, but...
Thirty, forty people.
Okay, alright. Questions from council?
Yes, Phil.
Area, like eight...
Yes, Phil.
Will you be having bands or music of any type?
Entertainment? Will you be having entertainment? No.
It's like, um...
I'd like...
Like...
Yeah, like, no, not lounge.
It's family based, I don't need the lounge, any...
They said they're going to take out.
Not allowed.
So it might have some atmospheric music, but you're not going to have entertainment as come on Friday night in season?
Will you also have like outside dining as well?
They don't have it currently. I possibly are considering it.
Net, net, yeah, maybe, for the song.
So is it going to be like cocktail menu and then beer? So are you going to sell individual like cans of beer to go or is this just going to be like six packs only?
Parabéns.
No, not takeout, yeah.
Yeah, they can have takeout.
So the single cans?
Just everything right on, yeah, right on.
On-site consumption?
Yes.
So you said... earlier said there's going to be takeouts?
Yeah.
I think he... he thought you were talking about food, I think. That's what I was asking, yeah.
Okay, there's nothing further from council. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council regarding this pending?
Yes, I'd like to.
Come on forward, sir.
Just state your name for the record.
My name's Gary Truby. Bernard and I own the property at 417-419 South Main Street. You probably know it being where Abe's is. Been in the city about seventy-five years, not as long as the other Abe's, but about seventy-five years and stuff. And in two locations, but this location since they did the redevelopment to build the post office. So we moved down, it was Mozeri's Dry Goods store. The folks have addressed a lot of my concerns, but I have the restaurant on the first floor that my brother runs. I'm retired now, and I have two apartments upstairs. Both rented, family on the second floor, single fellow on the third floor. And my problem or my concerns and my wife's concerns are quality of life issues and stuff like that. I can't reflect with these people or say anything about these people that want to open. That's great, it's good for the city, and I really welcome you, you know?
You know, I'll take an objection, sort of, listen, they're not opening, they've been open three years.
Okay, pardon my mistake.
That's okay. They've been here for a while.
I know.
At 75.
No. You know. But what I'm worried about is the shopping center itself, the area of the shopping center. I don't know if people have frequented down there previous to this, but the liquor store and there's an Aqua Lounge at the end of the shopping center.
Yes, sir, that's...
I'd rather we don't go back and forth at this point. If he has any...
Okay, that's fine.
You can address something afterward.
Yeah, that's super, I can talk to him too. But I do have some concerns about how the shopping center just changed hands, and previous to this, there was no property manager, or there was, but it was very, very difficult to get in touch with anyone if there was a problem. Because with the liquor store, we had a lot of problems. And I know the Aqua Lounge has speakers, they have shows there, it can be heard outside, and they also fill the shopping center. And that was another of our concerns was overflow of parking. I can't block my parking lot off because there's an easement on the 417 part of it. So I have to leave that open so that people can get in and out, and I worry about overflow. Also, we've had problems up there with panhandlers and visibly intoxicated people. And that would be another thing. Our hours at the restaurant aren't as long as their hours will be, so there will be times when we are both open at the same time, and I would be concerned that people would stumble down the street. Now, they've said no, and that's fine. They've answered that question that they're not going to have takeouts, they're not going to be having people going by with six packs because the area there, people like to drink. I mean, that's just the way it is, and these were some of our concerns. I had a couple other things written down. I'm not a public speaker, but you can see where I'm going with this. I'm just a little concerned about how I'm going to be able to enforce... I worry about my tenants. They have a six-year-old daughter, and I don't want people having to do that, and it's property values too, as far as like what's going on down with that. So there were my concerns, he addressed a lot of it, and I feel comfortable with some of it, but time will tell. And I just wanted to go on the record to say, just so I had said something.
Mr. Truby?
Yes.
How the... I probably buy hot dogs a couple times a month, so I park in the easement.
Yeah.
You have the park... the parking right along the house?
Alongside it.
And a few in the back.
Right.
Are you having problems with people, non-customers parking in your spots all the time?
No, not right now, not right now. And that would just be one of my concerns because my tenants do park there also. The easement, the shopping center owns five feet off the back of the building.
Right, okay.
Okay, towards our building. And then we own the drive-thru plus the lot in the back.
Since the liquor store closed?
Yeah.
There's a grocery store there, is it better or worse, the same?
It's been a lot better.
Yeah, I would imagine.
It's been a lot better because when the liquor store was there, there was big problem. I mean, there were visibly intoxicated people. We had urination and defecation in the alleyway, and see, there was no property manager to get in touch with. So we cleaned it. Right. You know, there were people using drugs behind the place. City knocked down the houses, it took a while, but it was great, as far as that goes.
Want to buy some land?
Yeah, it was... it was great.
I have not actually been, well, since that liquor store closed, I used to go there because I live a few blocks away from there. The... it's hard for me, I'm dismayed that you can't reach a property manager. There should be a property manager to meet. How is the parking... I know we're off topic here, but the parking lot there, is it... it was a disaster?
They fixed a lot of it, but now with the... with the other businesses that are there parking there, and these folks are going to have a restaurant, and they're going to need parking, and there is a big concern there that there's no fire lane. Paint it. I guess you have to have the fire lane painted in red or something like that.
Yeah.
So they park right up on the side, and then they come the other way, and there's no... sometimes there's no throughway there, there's room for one car.
Right.
And you have...
Yeah.
You... you... sir, you'll be able to, when you finish, you'll be able to address those concerns.
Well, I'm not actually addressing Mr. Barrett, I'm actually just trying to get information, you know, fix it if you need to.
Understood.
And I'm just trying to figure out which bits along the back or...
There is... there should be... my idea is there should be a fire lane. As you come out of those buildings, there should be a place for the fire truck or the ambulance to park.
Including Avocado's?
Um, no, because they're a... they're a separate building, which is good, which is good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just concerned that if something does happen there, the emergency vehicles can't get through, and they're going to have trouble with their parking, you know? I wish them that...
And these issues sound like it's something more to do with the property management than it does this liquor license.
With Avocado's.
Right. I kind of like to stay on topic as far as the liquor... Sir, I'd like to stay on topic as far as the liquor license transfer, not get into whether it may be going on at the property.
I understand. That's it, if anybody has any other questions for me, I just wanted to go on record that I have...
I don't have any questions, but I do have two questions to clarify.
I'm going to ask the attorney to come up and answer, respond.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you.
Attorney Tirana, if you'd care to address those concerns. Ones that pertain to the liquor license transfer, not all the others?
Yes, sir.
So do they own the property or do... are they renting?
They rent it.
Is it rented from the same people who own the shopping center?
Uh, there is a new landlord, it's... I believe the new company is D-H-A-N-L-L-C.
Okay, and then, so just to clarify, they are going to be having takeout for the alcohol or they are not?
No, not for the... not... I think what happened was he heard takeout when he... you know, heard food.
So just takeout food, they're not going to be selling individual beers, stuff like that, okay? Thank you.
They won't be selling individual beers, taking out the property.
Is the new owner to that property?
Yeah.
It used to be Dino something, right?
Except in... I think in, since maybe January, sir?
Oh, okay.
Twenty twenty-four?
There's a subway.
There's a new owner. They're, uh, they're based down in Allentown, but from what I've seen, this is actually the second tenant in that spot that I've been representing and have had... been pleasantly surprised with the... with the interaction that I've had from this new company. They're based down in the Allentown Eastern area, so...
So there has to be a property manager to contact?
Yes. Outside, you know, as you guys know, you set it up outside the twenty-mile mark, yeah.
Right, right. Okay. Is there anyone else here this evening that would care to address council on this particular liquor license transfer?
Resolution will be on...
Okay, you can respond to that.
Okay, so the resolution will be on for Thursday's meeting for council's vote?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck to you. Anything else from council on this?
No.
Okay, we will adjourn till 6:00 PM, thank you.
I think it was John Tirana, Tirana. I don't... I think, but I'm not...
It's all...
What's going on? I didn't feel like doing nothing today.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Okay.
Is it just the one?
Right there.
Welcome to the city council work session, October 8th, 2024. The mayor, you have a few items on our...
We got some firsts.
We have something first, excuse me, we do.
So we have the resolution approving the transfer of the liquor license from 74-76 South Main Street in Ashley to 395 South Main Street. And we also have a second reading of file of council number four of 2024 in ordinance of the city of Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, amending section nineteen dash two oh nine of chapter nineteen of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Wilkes-Barre entitled offenses miscellaneous provisions. That's the quality of life.
Funds?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on those?
And then there's the mayor.
Hey, mayor, good evening.
Hey, evening, everyone. I'd like to start off, the resolution is authorizing the proper city officials take any and all necessary actions related to the selling of 120 Sanborn Street to Fire, Clarence Park for $1,000. Now, this young lady is going to build a home on that property. It was a... it's an empty lot. If you know where the funeral home is, it's right behind the funeral home. So hopefully we'll be able to sell this and put that back on the tax rolls and get a home on there. So that's the idea, sell it for a thousand dollars and then that person will build a home.
Great.
Okay? You're okay with that? Yes, you're okay with that?
Okay.
Alright. Secondly, authorizing the proper city officials to sign any and all necessary documents related to the purchase and installation of two Milner Gear Guardian Washer Extractors, total cost of $41,528. If you have any questions, Chief Delaney is here tonight that can answer questions. It is a co-stars, and also there's a grant that's going to be paying for most of this cost.
Maybe chief can just tell us what these pieces of equipment are, just for the record, please?
What that is?
Beering. Yes, Councilman Barrett, thanks for the question. What these are, they're pretty much like a commercial washing machine, it's called a gear extractor, specifically made for firefighters' turnout gear. When the firefighters are inside of a fire, there's a lot of hydrocarbons that get impregnated in the material, and it's carcinogenic, it causes cancer. So we have one at fire headquarters now, we applied to FEMA for a grant, so they're paying ninety percent. One of them will go to South Fire Station, we never had one there before, and one will replace the one at fire headquarters and Hollenbach Station. We were able to buy one for their... there two years ago. So it's just critical after a fire to get their turnout gear cleaned, and this is specifically made for it. It adds chemicals to the washing machine, and it cleans it and it makes it safer to firefighters to wear the next time they respond to a fire.
Questions for the chief?
Okay.
You're going to need a dryer too, chief?
We were...
Are you going to hang them on the line?
We have them, we have them, but the good thing is we applied to FEMA for a grant, and they're paying for ninety percent of this. So a big part of it is for FEMA, we pay ten percent.
Great, great. Thank you, chief.
We're good, Bill?
Sir.
Okay. The next is authorizing the proper city officials to apply and obtain 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $23,310. Proper city officials are authorized to enter any appropriate agreement along with any and all other project documents related to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant and application.
Pretty much a yearly thing that we do, we apply for this yearly?
Yes, sir.
Usually successful.
Okay. If you're okay, I'll move on to the next agenda item.
Go ahead, mayor.
Okay, authorizing the issuance of one or more series of its hospital revenue bonds to Woodbridge Healthcare Incorporated in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $180 million for the purpose of financing a project on behalf of Woodbridge Healthcare, the Scranton Holding Company. This is, as you may or may not know, is to purchase the Commonwealth Health Facilities in Wilkes-Barre and Scranton. We have representation here tonight if you have any questions about the bond. I will say that this bond, the city is not responsible for payment of this bond. We're basically a pass-through, as we've done many, many times in the past for these type of grants and bonds and so forth. So basically, we are not responsible for the payment of this bond. Woodbridge would be responsible for that.
Yeah, and neither would the finance authority be responsible for the issuing party.
Would that happen to... you want to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair, council members. My name is Laura Kurtz, and I'm serving as bond counsel to Woodbridge. And we provided the resolution for your consideration today, and I do just want to clarify that this is for TEFRA purposes. There is an act under the tax code, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, that requires the governmental unit having jurisdiction over where the facilities are located to provide their approval for the use of tax-exempt bond proceeds. You're also giving an approval under the Municipality Authorities Act. Since the authority that's issuing the bonds was incorporated by the city, we need your approval. So that's the content of the resolution that's been provided to you. Just wanted to give you a quick overview and then also introduce Don Steigman, who's the president of Woodbridge, to answer any questions that you may have.
The only question I might have is, is this the $180 million, is that the total package price or is this just a portion that you wish to finance? Is there more to it than that?
So the $180 million, I'll just give you a quick update and then I'll let Don step in. But that's the maximum principal amount that's been authorized. There are $30 million that are included in there for capital improvements to all of the facilities, not just the facilities in this city and county. And then there's also some amounts in there for costs of issuance, as well as cost to pay interest on the bonds for three years, and some working capital.
Good evening.
Good evening, hi, I'm Don Steigman. I thank you for having us here this evening. I'm president of Woodbridge and wanted to start off by saying we're very excited to be part of the community and also working with the hospitals, both on the Scranton side as well as Wilkes-Barre. I think everyone in this room understands and knows the history of the hospitals, and really what we're going to be using the bond dollars for is primarily being able to acquire these facilities and have some capital improvements. When you take a look at what we're going to be doing on the capital improvement side, part of it is through the bonds, and then over the three-year period, we're anticipating about $75 million in both places coming from other interest income and also from operations. So, you know, we're going to be making a significant contribution back into these hospitals that both sides very much needed, as everyone in this room understands. So our plan really is to come on board November 1st. As everyone knows, Woodbridge is a 501(c)(3) organization. We did that intentionally because we thought it was best to put it back into the community as a community asset as it was several years ago, and we will operate as such as a 501(c)(3). I also wanted to mention, we've had discussions, the mayor and myself, about the pilot, and I know that's of great interest to the city. As you know, we're new, we're startup. We're walking into a situation that's really turnaround. And so we're really not able at this point in time to participate in the pilot program just due to the fact that we don't know all the facts that what we're walking into ourselves from the economic side of it. At some future point, I told the mayor, we'd be more than happy to talk about it. But also, also, we want to be good partners with the... with the city. We understand the services that the city provides and continues to provide and will provide that. As many of you know, there are very few hospitals in the United States that are 501(c)(3) that do pay pilot. So that's a little bit, I wanted to get that on the table, you know, because I know that's been an issue. You know, the importance of this workshop, and also on Thursday, of which I will be in attendance at the public meeting, is really this, we need your support and your vote on this because we're looking to do the close at the end of this month, which means the bonds need to get issued. And if we don't get you guys to agree to support this, we really won't have a deal. And then that will mean that you will have to go and work with CHS going forward. So that's really the reality piece of it. As far as, you know, what we're going to be doing here in the community, a few things. We are going to be reconstituting the management teams, which we talked about this, and I've been very clear. We're going to be reconstituting the boards of these hospitals, and we're going to be reconstituting what we need to do on medical staff. So we really want to go ahead and start and put a very clean slate going forward. That's really what needs to happen. When you look at it, we need to put capital into these facilities, and we need to bring the doctors back. We believe that in talking to the doctors, and I've been here constantly since July 30th, when the APA has been signed, talking to many, many physicians and many community leaders. And that's what we need to do on our basic plan. We need to invest capital in facilities that we think will be beneficial to the community going forward. That's what we're going to do here. What questions may I answer for you?
I have a few. So I know you said $180 and $30 million is going for capital improvements. So I know you said 180 and 30 million is going for capital improvements. Can you break down the rest of the cost? How much you're paying for the hospitals? What you're taking out for cost of fees, cost of issuance? How much is, how much are you actually purchasing it for?
Yeah, the schedule right now, we haven't printed an offering document and we haven't finalized the numbers at this point. Pricing has not occurred on the bonds. We can provide you with a breakdown when it's finalized, if that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, even do you have an estimate of what we're looking at number-wise? I mean...
You had to come up with this number somehow.
Right.
You know, how did you say 180? It's got to be a breakdown.
On the purchase price, are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead, please. You have the numbers on the purchase price.
I do not have the numbers in front of me. I will provide them. I don't want to misquote any of them.
So we will get you the breakdown, okay?
Laura, if you want to get the breakdown to me, I can see that it gets distributed to the city council.
Yep, absolutely.
And then just another question. So this nonprofit, Woodbridge, was created in May of 2024, correct?
Yes.
So is there a reason that you're not purchasing this hospital through your sister company, Stonebridge?
So let me address that. There's been a lot of confusion about Stonebridge and Woodbridge. Stonebridge is a separate company and I'm not sure, and I can check on this shortly by a quick text, that organization was going to be dissolved because of the confusion that it's created, okay? Stonebridge has zero to do with Woodbridge. And when the decision was made to do this as a 501(c)(3), we thought very seriously about it and that's really the best way for these hospitals to continue to move forward and also then return them as community assets. So zero relationship.
So was this, was Woodbridge created for the purpose of purchasing CHA?
Yes. And, you know, our board, you can look at our website, is primarily hospital executives, which is unique versus just having, you know, only, you know, the priest, the school teacher, the banker, et cetera. These are accomplished healthcare executives, five out of the seven.
So Woodbridge currently owns, you own no healthcare facility?
We do not. We have, you know, our team that we have has extensive experience in acquisition and operations of hospitals and that's what we bring to this acquisition.
One more. So with the purchase, are you planning on hiring more staff?
So let me talk a little bit about our plan, okay? First, we need to stabilize the facilities on both, you know, the Lackawanna side as well as Lucerne side. Stabilize and then our plans are to grow those services that we believe need to be brought back into the community. So, you know, our anticipation is over time, we will have additional employees. As you know, many have left with some of the downsizing. We're hopeful we bring services back into the community that are needed. And our goal is to grow the services here and grow the revenue side that can then feed the expense side, that then can feed the capital side. You know how this works.
Do you have a estimated timeframe? I mean, you have to have an idea going in, what you're expecting. Is it a three- to five-year plan that you're going to expand or you're not sure until you actually get in there?
Well, we have some thoughts about what needs to be done. Just so everyone knows, what's transpired, you know, on July 30th, we signed an asset purchase agreement. Everyone's aware of that. Up until that point, CHS did not allow any of us into their facilities. That's how they operate nationwide, okay? So from August 1st through every single day, we're learning more and more what needs to be done and what needs to change. But our initial goal is we have some areas that we know that needs attention. There's some physical plant issues that need to be addressed, some infrastructure issues. We've had a national company come in and look at the infrastructure as part of our due diligence, you know, the cooling towers, the chillers, all that stuff. And there's a significant amount of dollars that need to be poured back into that. Actually, the first two weeks of November, we have this company coming back that's going to be doing an extensive inventory of all the equipment in the hospital. So we want to know not only, you know, the useful life, we have all of that from the accounting side, but really what we want to do is understand, is this equipment working, not working? What do we need to replace? So first part is we're going to do a five-year capital plan and we've done parts of that already, you know, as part of the bond offering on that. And that's why I said earlier, our numbers are probably going to be closer to 75 million. You know, the 30 million in the bond and the rest is going to come out of operations and some other sources of income, okay? So, I mean, that's really what our plan, we know the emergency rooms need to be redone. We've lost some patients through our emergency rooms and some of the services. We want to bring those services back.
Now, how many employees are currently there?
Between both sides, about 4,000.
And how many do you foresee coming in?
We don't have a projection on that, quite frankly. What we know is, you know, what we're going to look at as far as the census is concerned and the types of patients coming in. But if we stay on track, status quo, let me be clear, status quo is not an option for us, okay? Which really means growth. So let me mention also to you just a little bit about what I'm doing here, because I think it's important as part of this whole thing, besides being the president of this. So my background, I was president of Jackson Health System in Miami, Florida, large teaching university hospital with the University of Miami. We, I was there 14 years, finished my tenure in last September. During that period, I went through the same approach and same issues that we have in Wilkes-Barre and Scranton. Some of our hospitals were not performing, undercapitalized, et cetera. So during that period, I came in, helped stabilize it, helped grow it. We purchased a new hospital, et cetera. So my background's been in the turnaround business. Prior to coming here, I was doing a lot of consulting work for UC Davis in Sacramento, California, where they had the same issues as many hospitals are facing, where the revenues and the expenses aren't lining up. So I spent a fair amount of time working with them. Then I get a call from Woodbridge, hey, can you help on this project, right? And I learned about the project and I said, I think it's doable, number one. Number two, you know, the only way we'll do this is put these back as community assets. I mean, that's the only way I thought that these facilities can continue to thrive. So, you know, my background's been in turnaround. A little bit more, I'm originally from Connecticut. Does anyone here from Villanova? Just want to make sure, I'm a Big East basketball guy. But anyway...
From a rival in Villanova.
I got it. But I know we have a lot of Villanova people also around here. But anyway, from Connecticut originally and then went for my master's in MBA in Healthcare Administration at George Washington University. So that's my background. I've had experience in turnarounds running multi-hospital experience.
I'd like to just address the elephant in the room here. Our biggest concern obviously is 750,000, I believe, the taxes for that. And you say somewhere down the road, you might consider a pilot. Sell me this, sell me my vote here. Give me some incentive.
Right.
This, we have no incentive here. I mean, we do this, we lose 750,000.
Mike, you mind if I answer that?
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, Mike, and all council, yeah, there will be a reduction of $744,000 in property taxes. But keep in mind that when this is purchased for 120 million, I don't know how much is going to be Scranton versus Wilkes-Barre, but let's just identify possibly, you know, an 80/40 there. If it's $80 million for the Wilkes-Barre properties, there's transfer fees on that amount of money. As Don said, as they start doing some more work in the buildings and they upgrade and they do construction and other things that are necessary, they're going to require permits. If there's $10 million or $20 million in that type of work in the Wilkes-Barre city facilities, there's permit fees. So what we're going to lose the first year, two years, yeah, it's a lot of money, but it could be made up through the transfer fees and the permit fees. Okay? So I hope I answered your question, Mike. We're all looking for, you know, making up that 744,000 and my budget's going to be presented next Tuesday, so you're going to see how we're faring with this. But there will be money made by the city through, like I said, the transfer fees and the permit fees.
So that would be for the first year? How do we...
No, it'll be, the permit fees will be as they continue. Their construction may fall for the next three years. I don't know what this gentleman has in charge there, you know, in mind, but all I'm saying is, yes, the transfer fee alone, and Don, I don't know if you ever equate it, how much of that 120 million will be for Wilkes-Barre?
Well, we haven't divided it up, but we know on the 75 million, that's going to be over a three- to four-year period. So, and that's what we're committing to, that we know needs to be done from an initial capital from the bond and then the rest from operations that we anticipate spending.
I would be more comfortable if you would at least do something from maybe a community public relations standpoint. So for example, Wymanville Healthcare paid 136,000 for their pilot. Wonderful if you'd do that. Geisinger pays us a pilot. So there are hospitals, we're lucky, we had two hospitals, both pay pilots in our city. As you probably know, you probably did a lot of market research around here, you understand what the median salary is of our taxpayers who couldn't ever afford any kind of tax increase. I'm sure you also probably did all the research and found out that all the nonprofits downtown all pay into the pilot program as well. So from a community PR relations standpoint, I would be much more comfortable, at least you put something in for the pilot.
Let me just make a comment. Understood. And, you know, the mayor and myself have had several conversations about this and I really understand, you know, the ask on that. We're really not in a position, we're doing this turnaround...
I think you'd probably be in a position for a couple thousand dollars, something, something that makes it like, yes, you really care about Wilkes-Barre. Yes, we're going to be a community partner. You keep saying community partner, we're going to put everything back into the community. You know, I've had people say to me, $700,000 and they just say, ooh, that's seven police officers that we're going to have to cut from our budget. You realize how much that is. We get lots of pressure from our constituents constantly who complain that colleges don't even do enough on their pilots. And we had them doubled in the last couple, last administration, we had it double. So we're under that pressure constantly for nonprofits not contributing to the community. So my suggestion to you is put something on the table, least something.
Thank you.
Shows that you care.
We're losing a lot every year.
Yeah, because we're going...
It's residual, you know, it's, I mean, I know we're going to get a one-time thing, but it's, we're losing a lot of money on this.
Understood.
And pending regulation approval, when will you get approval?
So I know this is going to formal vote on Thursday for this council. And your vote is very, very important. We would like to get this affirmatively approved on Thursday and then on the 16th, the Lackawanna Council is meeting to also approve it. And once we have those approved, then we're ready to move forward. And I do want to emphasize the importance of the vote really comes down to, you know, do we want this to occur for the community or not? That's really, you know, what this whole thing's about and...
And you can make that happen.
Understood. But I mean, that's what this is really about, because if we don't get the affirmative vote, right, then, you know, the hospitals will revert back to CHS and CHS will do, you know, as they see fit. So, but I appreciate your attentiveness on this. I understand, I really do, on the pilot stuff, we're just not there. We're doing a turnaround, you know, when you look at both of these facilities, we're just not at that point. I understand, you know, the importance of it. I told the mayor that we'll continue on communications on this and we appreciate it, though.
You know, one thing, we talk about the pilot, but we also talk about what your organization would receive in return for that. We provide top-notch police and fire services that you're not going to find anywhere else that are going to even compare to what we have here now. And you benefit from that. You benefit from that and reduced fire insurance rates and just the fact that you have...
And the mayor told me about snow removal...
We can afford those types of services to continue doing that, to provide that protection for all of us, all your staff, your patients, your facilities, and that's just so important. And we just don't want to lose track because we've come a ways. We've come a long way, thanks to Mayor Brown, his administration, everybody working hard. We don't want to step backwards. And when you, when we were asked to provide, continue providing those services and you're one of the largest employers in the county and certainly one of the largest in the city and you'll continue to do so, hopefully, we want that to happen. It's not that we don't, we don't want to affect healthcare for our residents and service for our residents, but conversely, we also don't want to...
Increase taxes.
Step backwards.
Yeah, sure. That's what it seems like.
That's the concern you're hearing here. We want to continue providing those services to you, your facilities, your staff, and of course, your patients, but it costs money to do that.
Understood. You know, and if we were in a different position, we'd probably be able to talk about this. We're just not there.
Hopefully, we will be.
The Geisinger stuff, Geisinger, as you know, is owned by Kaiser, large, multi-billion-dollar company, you know?
This is before Kaiser, though. This is for decades before Kaiser. You could do something, even it's just a little offering, saying, okay, we'll do a little bit the very first year and then we'll do, we'll go up over the years, just to start off on the right foot. Starting on the wrong foot with us.
Thank you.
Senator Alston, counsel?
No.
No.
Okay. One other question, one other question. I know Stan touched on it. Are you keeping the majority of the employees that are there now, all the nurses? You're not bringing in new nursing or nothing like that?
So, great question. We committed to keeping all the employees in good standing and we're also keeping the union agreements at both Wilkes-Barre and Scranton as well. So that's been our commitment.
Are you going to keep the same name or are you going to change the name?
Right now, we're going to keep the same name and we're going to do some community surveys to see what the community thinks and, you know, some of the physicians and some of the community leaders to see, should we keep them the same? The way I understand it is a lot of the hospital names, everyone knows it as a general, you know, so it's really more of that name than maybe the Commonwealth name.
Nobody uses that.
Exactly. Exactly. So, you know, we're going to dissect what we need to do on that. I know this hospital here has a great reputation for a long time. It's known as that. One of my good friends, who happens to be a burn doctor, I knew he was from Northeast Pennsylvania. He grew up locally here in Wilkes-Barre and he told me he was born, quote, "at the general", okay? And he went to University of Scranton, then he went to medical school out of state, but great reputation has a place. And, you know, we want to bring parts of that reputation back.
One more question. Are you planning on closing any buildings and consolidating?
We don't have any plans right now on the Wilkes-Barre side, on the Scranton side. There's a fair number of buildings that have already been closed.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, folks, also, one of the concerns I had when Don and I first met was earned income tax, okay, as far as employees. And Don has assured me that they're going to be looking at bringing some of the services back that were left or let go by Commonwealth Health. What that means is more employees, more earned income tax. So rather than a reduction in earned income tax, if the plans that Don has for the future, it will increase the earned income tax from Commonwealth Health or whatever, Woodbridge, whatever you want to call it. So that's not a concern I had. It was one of the things that when Don and I met about a month ago, we brought up, okay? And Don assured me, maybe that's not going to be a concern. So understand, I look at every dollar, okay? I'm a numbers guy, and sitting down and I'm looking at what we have, what we have to fix, and I'm not concerned about the earned income tax. I am seeing that we are going to be seeing some transfer fees coming in, healthy transfer fees for 100 and some million dollars, but also permit fees as the 75 million dollars in our part of that construction takes place. There'll be, you know, a transfer fees on 100 and some million dollars, permit fees on whatever amount of that 75 million dollars is associated to Wilkes-Barre. So between those two, you know, we're looking at at least a healthy start here.
Don, one suggestion. One of the universities offers a homebuyer program for employees to buy in the city of Wilkes-Barre. And if you know, if you've done any research about third-class cities, we're very constrained in how we do taxation, so the only way we succeed is people making good salaries, but who live in the city. So I would put that out to you. One of our universities does $10,000 as a down payment for the house, but in the city of Wilkes-Barre. So that would be helping you. You have employees, we have tax revenue, we have housing, all that. So that's just a suggestion.
Thank you. I think that's an important point to look at. As you know, there's a lot of recruitment that needs to be done back into Wilkes-Barre and Scranton for medical professionals. There's a fair amount of locum tenants here and outside companies providing staffing. And what really needs to happen is the hospitals, and I'm talking in general, need to be competitive that we bring these people to live and work in the local market. And that's another whole area that we want to make sure that we do, because it's not appropriate to bring them in, and quite frankly, it's a lot more expensive when you're bringing people in. But that's a good suggestion.
For the council?
Good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One more, Ed.
Tim's going to, I think, introduce it.
Yeah, just, just as a housekeeping matter, there was a resolution prepared for your agenda on Thursday that would have been to appoint Laura Carter, who's in the audience tonight, to the Human Relations.
Hello, Laura. Hello.
For whatever reason, that resolution didn't make it onto the agenda. It was probably just an oversight. So what we'll do is, we'll put that up on the website tomorrow. As long as it's there 24 hours before the Thursday meeting, we're fine under the Sunshine Act, and this will be as a new item. So we will have the resolution for Ms. Carter on Thursday, appointing her to the Human Relations Commission. So if anybody does have any questions for Ms. Carter, since she's here tonight, tonight's probably the time to ask those questions, because again, the resolution will be on the agenda.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Hello, everyone. I'm Laura Gentry Carter. I'm a resident of this city. I was born here in 1981. Me and my mother live over on North Washington Street, 398 through 400. She bought the house in 76. I scooted away from here when I was 21 and moved to New York City for about 15 years, and then I've left for Denver for the last five years. So being back in this town, you know, just post-COVID, trying to understand where I am, you know, what I'm doing, how I'm making money. I'm living next door to my mom and I'm 40-some years old, right? In my past, I was the Director of People and Culture for a company called Superfly, and we were the largest-scale music festival in North America, and so that's what we did. And I did all of the hiring of the employees, I did the internship program, health and wellness, you know, things like that around the country, really, and with our festivals. So I kind of got my shoes, you know, there and my grounding and stuff, and from being a Director of People and Culture, I've learned how to talk to people, right? Like, I love people for some weird reason, I get it, but I love being around people. I love helping the community, I love being part of it. Maybe three years ago, Mr. Mayor was the Block Captain Program, I think? So came down and signed up for that. I usually get to a yearly cleaning on my street on North Washington for our block. I post flyers, Spanish and English, and I say, you know, 4:00 PM on this Sunday, usually before Halloween for the trick-or-treaters and stuff. So it's like nice and cleaned up, but every neighbor comes out of their house, you know, with brooms, and we go down and, you know, cut the bushes and, you know, for people who aren't living there. And then DPW gives us rakes, and, you know, they come pick up all the trash and stuff like that. So there's a lot of ways that I've learned to intertwine with the community. I have a company now called People and Culture Benefits, and I'm certified in the state of PA to provide insurance, health insurance, life insurance, disability, all those fun things. And that translated from talking to employees, right, and delivering benefits in a way that people could understand them. So I translated that here to being a broker, and in the meantime, I was making granola, and my sister said that I should make it a company because nobody ever had any granola like that. So I am at the Wilkes-Barre, huh? I have two little bags with me.
I'll try one, definitely.
Nick Cave just came by to buy some at the farmer's market, you know? But yeah, so that's my second company. Yeah, it's my second company, and it's my recipe, and I kind of got bored buying granola in the store, and I do a Wilkes-Barre on the label. I'm representing this town. It's very important to me, the place that I grew up in. It's so good to see how far we've come, you know, in general, and I'm really proud of it. I'm really proud of this town, proud of myself, you know? I get to say that, which feels really good. And I'm really excited to be a part of everything, you know, that goes on here, but especially the Board of Human Relations, so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do they meet regularly? Have they even had a meeting? I don't recall.
No, the two. Yeah, it's as.
Yeah, as needed, right. I agree.
And the two complaints we received asking that they be convened, one turned out to be technically in Plains, not in Wilkes-Barre, and the other one was in Hanover and not in Wilkes-Barre.
So. Switcheroo. That's perfect.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, that's the perfect board. You want that one?
Well, we will be voting on this on Thursday.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you all.
Thanks for the granola. Thank you. I'm going to enjoy this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is dinner.
She's in my district. I can.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Belisco, what do you have for us, Steve?
Uh, yes, just two small items, Charlie, for Charlie. Stop sign on Locust and Melrose, you can barely tell it says stop. It just faded right out, it's pure white. And same type of thing, Locust and Minor, the sign that says Minor Street is bent and you can't read that either. It's twisted up pretty good. If you could take care of those two things for me, thank you. That's all, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. Mrs. McClay?
Just four minor things. So three are follow-ups, but one is, I saw it on my way here, there's a couch on the corner of Madison and Beaumont. It's on the corner, so nobody is going to claim it.
Is it nice one?
No, 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 no. Yeah, you don't want it. And then the paved cut on North Main Street, on the newly paved North Main Street, it's still not fixed. Do we have an estimated timeframe on that?
Wouldn't I know that the utilities have a list and they go through their list. I'll check again with Joe. He's the.
Okay. Haven't even got it painted, and they have already cut it up, so. Anything on the boarding house on North Main Street? The one that I keep complaining about the garbage, that when Health went there, they said it's a boarding house, they're going to check with Bill Harris? If not, I can.
I believe they did check with Bill Harris, but I'm not sure that it reached that level, but I will check.
Okay. And then the last one is the dumpster on North Main Street, the people that are going around with the cans dumping the garbage, there's still no dumpster at that apartment building.
Yeah, the apartment building was packed.
Yeah, I mean.
That's in the 600 block.
Um, I can, it's right by the old St. John's Church, so.
The big white building?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the former convent next to the church. I know exactly where it is.
I think it might be the 400 block.
I'll get a date for it.
It's not the convent, it's the one between the convent and where the church is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a couple calls on that one myself.
Yeah, they're taking the garbage cans and they're dumping it to neighbors.
It's the big white one?
Yes.
I thought that was the convent.
The convent is where Waimingavaile Alcohol and Drug is now located.
I know the exact building she's talking about.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Muren?
I have a couch issue as well.
Is it nice?
No, it's on the, it's on the corner of South Sherman and East Northampton, the insurance building. It's been a big problem with garbage left there and stuff.
I'm sorry, East Northampton?
East Northampton, South Sherman, it's an insurance company. Yeah, we've had a lot of issues there in the past.
Yep.
And I believe you shut the one apartment down. But yeah, I just, I meant to email you, yeah, I meant to email you that today, that's why I just wanted to bring that up. And then, yeah, that's all I have for today.
Okay, Mr. Brooks?
I'm doing Hazel Street, the street cleaner does a great job, all Hazel Street is nice, but sidewalks are horrible, so we need to get a sidewalk, a little smaller, so sidewalks are a mess, but the streets are a lot more possible. And then I broke a record with 28 West South Street. So I've done nothing all summer long, and, thank you.
You know, we want to raise these fines for the quality-of-life violations. We hear about couches, and people are putting things out, and it's a hardship for us to go out and pick up these things. We have to, so, I don't know why people think that somebody would want their old moldy, wet couch or vacuum cleaner that doesn't work, and they throw things out there. So if there's anything we can do, now that we are addressing the quality-of-life fines, which we sorely needed to look at, and I'm glad we are, these people that were putting these things out, throwing them out at the curb, are basically littering in my mind and throwing their garbage out on the street with the hopes that somebody either comes along and takes it, or ultimately, we do, and it's wrong. Nobody wants your junk. Nobody wants your garbage, but they're throwing it out there, and ultimately, we have to come along and send car crews up to pick them up.
That's why they're on our corners, that's our problem.
Yeah, if we can identify where this stuff comes from.
Residential problem.
Any opportunity we do get where we can find somebody, I'm all in favor, because if you want your stuff hauled away, call, pay somebody to haul it away. Don't depend on somebody else to take it, because they're not going to. Nobody wants your broken-down furniture and your soaking-wet couch. Nobody wants it.
The woman asked if she can address the council. We're sitting in the back there.
We are in our work session mode. Thursday, we're in public session. If you want to come back on Thursday, you can speak about whatever you want.
I just, I just as a citizen and just as.
We can talk to you right afterwards in private if you do have a concern. Be more than happy to do that. So don't go away, couple minutes. And, you know, our prayers for the victims and those that are still struggling with Hurricane Helene, horrific, and again, prayers also for those that are facing the onslaught and the rot of Hurricane Milton that's coming along. I can only imagine, and I just, certainly, I'm sure we all wish them the best. We have family members that are in that area, friends, and those that did pass, so.
Bill, when you brought that up, I just want to let you know, council members, that the city of Wilkes-Barre did supply disaster relief in North Carolina. We sent 88 cases of water down and 200 flashlights. So we reached out to find out, what do they need the most? And it was water and flashlights. So we partnered with McCarthy Tire, was dropped off at McCarthy Tire this week, being sent down to North Carolina. So on behalf of the city, you know, we sent 88 cases of water and 200 flashlights.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it for the work session. We will be here on Thursday. Thank you, everyone. We'll talk to you.
Taking a couple of these to high school.
Sure will.
Want me to get your book?
Sure you want.
Sure. Absolutely.
Throw everything in the way, the delusion. I kept all that for eight years.